Good evening. The Strategic Plan Update Meeting of May 22, 2017, of the Dubuit Committee's School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barton?
Here.
Mr. Bytine?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Prohaska?
Here.
Ms. Ryan?
Ms. Seagurt?
Here.
Ms. Whitman?
Here.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the non-bargaining salary and benefit package as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the non-bargaining salary and benefit package as presented. Is there any discussion?
Phil, if you want to jump in, but basically it's the package that was discussed in exam session a month ago, or several, a couple of weeks ago. But it's in alignment with our other packages. So, Phil?
Yeah, we went in with the same, the same view and the same amount, and it turned out to be a 2% overall package. There are a few more variances in the non-bargaining because we have, you know, it's not like the same group of people, you know, have the same levels of classification. So administrators are in that, interpreters are in that, IT people and everything. And we've tried to, you know, maintain the same thing. We are going to the deductible insurance plans like all the other groups. So that will be, everybody in the district will be moving to that. And we're able to pretty much take care of that again. It for, we say the 2% total package and what that increase would be on base is really different for every person depending upon where they're at. You know, if there's any steps, longevities, if there's any other things in there. Some administrators might be making a significant move because they're going from X number of years' experience to the next group, and so they might jump quite a few. But overall, it, you know, it works out pretty.
It's back to the same ways our other packages are, 2%.
Yep, 2%.
Okay. All right. Any comments? Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. District Strategic Plan Review, you want to kick us off?
Okay. So this is a three-parter tonight. This is the first time it's been a three-parter. Generally, in May or June, it's two pieces. It's a refresher of the priority initiatives that we set for this year and what we've done to accomplish that. Yeah, it is to set some priority initiatives for next year, but most importantly, so we have a draft of those priority initiatives. But then most importantly tonight, I believe, is the beginning conversation around our strategic plan. Where will this district go in the next five years, starting in November or December when we finalize a plan? I think when we get to that point, it'd be, well, I'll talk about that when we get there. So the first piece will be what have we done this year in regards to the priority initiatives that were sent last June? And we'll talk a little bit about next year, and then, as I said, we'll get to, we'll get to the conversation, the first conversation of several about the strategic plan, which will hopefully be adopted November, December, maybe January of next year. So priority initiatives this year, Mike. Again, we developed this process as a communication tool to our community as well as the board. When we set the strategic plan in place five years ago, this wasn't really something that was in our mind, but as we worked through that first year, it seemed to make sense that how are we going to judge as opposed to coming back five years later and saying, "All right, what did we do?" Well, let's break it into five-year intervals or individual yearly steps. So we came through this process. You'll know if you go back a slide, Mike, that there's the kind of the symbols that you'll find, something that's completed, something that's had significant progress, steady progress, or some progress. The first couple of years, everything was a checkmark, and the board challenged me and the administrative team to say, "Well, if everything's a checkmark, maybe you're not pushing it very hard." So you will see some things tonight that aren't checkmarks, and we'll talk about why that is and what we'll do to draw that forward. So if we jump into student achievement, well, okay, right in student achievement. This was a checkmark last time, so I won't spend a lot of time talking about the things that were checkmarked at our, at our meeting in February. But school leaders will develop new school-based action plans that best suit the individual school needs, supported by district staff, in line with district goals. That's been very successful this year, and those buildings are in process of writing their plans for next year so that the forum will know how we can best support their work. Implement new and enhanced experience-based instructional strategies such as project-based learning. That is yellow. That, quite honestly, was a very aggressive one-year goal. That's going to be a multi-year process and something that likely will manifest itself in the next version of the strategic plan as well. And you'll see that we've pulled that forward into our next priority initiatives.
Can you, can you speak to what got done in that area briefly?
Absolutely. So, let me cheat here. With that, in the individual building plans, they kind of went from where they were at to incorporating student-focused activities in their classroom, sort of activity-based. But we haven't gone to the point of actual full-blown project-based across the board. We wanted to get to a point where every student experiences that every year to some degree. Some classes, it may be a few times a year, and some classes, it may be the entire class. And we haven't quite gotten to the point where we have classes like that, but certainly at the high school level and at the middle school level, we're moving that way. One example of that that we'll talk about is the, the part of the one-to-one initiative at the high schools and the break-fix piece where students will be given credit to actually making the help desk for technology. So there's a learning component there, but it's also hands-on. So we're, we're moving down that continuum, but I would certainly not say that that's a checkmark that every student every year has those experiences.
The question about, maybe data on, Dave Wilson's probably best to respond. When you say project-based, I think in terms of contextualized learning, the opportunity to have a project that even might even be student-created, they actually come up with the idea for the project and then pursue the research and so on and so forth. Is that a correct assumption? And how would you define project-based learning in that context?
Sometimes people define it as problem-based learning as opposed to project-based, but it's, it's the same as what you've just described. That's, I think, the, the way that we've come closest to measuring what it is is through our 21st Century Learning Initiative that we did over the last couple of years, which was kind of related to technology, but we also created a learning continuum. Just a few weeks ago, Roosevelt did what we call a reflective friends review. Basically, it's walking into classrooms, observing what the teacher's doing, observing what the student is doing, and seeing where it falls on the continuum. That's very much related to authentic learning, project-based learning, contextual learning, I think you called it. It's all that, how much are the students involved? Where's the student voice in the project, in the activities, and in the learning? But also having it tied to the standards that we're bound to meet. It's just not kids getting ideas and going off and doing stuff. It's tied to the standards that we're also trying to teach them.
There are some other, some basic steps to that. Many of you probably have received emails from English classes in the last week or so, where they were given a pretty free hand to identify a problem, do some research. And then the next step was to reach out to community leaders such as yourself, or, you know, city council, or whoever they think was the appropriate audience, and then forward that as a, you know, basically inviting your help with whatever their given issue was at hand. So some of those types of things, again, pretty early in that evolution, but beginning to help them think beyond, okay, what are we being given, but what can we, how can we think, how can we be part of that solution?
Thank you.
Another thing that bears noting about project-based learning is that Prescott's charter school instructional design, it's called expeditionary learning, which is one, one brand, if you will, of project-based learning. It's all rooted in active engagement, hands-on, rooted in real-world projects. And so we don't often anymore talk about that instructional design, but that is the basis of their instructional design.
One thing you'll hear from a lot of people in higher education is that too many students are coming into higher education without owning their education. They don't, they don't own the process. It's what's given to them as opposed to them owning it. So any of this kind of project, there's lots of buzzwords that define it. But project-based learning is designed to, you know, make them stakeholders in their own learning as opposed to simply being something they are given to do. So I'm, I'm just very encouraged about that kind of level of instruction because it does force them to be, if you will, co-producers of their own learning environment.
Nancy, is that, I understand the project-based learning at Prescott. How about our other elementary schools? Are some, are similar programs being enacted there?
We have, I'd say we have a growing amount of it. We have some classrooms where it has taken on much more of an existence than in others. That's one where it's the whole school, where their instructional design is based on it. But we're seeing an upsurge in, sometimes we, we talk about project-based learning, but we also need to think about why. It's back to what you're saying, Mr. Bytine. Why do we do project-based learning? Because of that active engagement of the child in their own learning, responsible for their learning. What'd you call, say, co-producers of it? I like that.
So that's why, quite honestly, this is yellow. Because you have schools who are further down that continuum, and they've been focused on it for a decade or more. We have other schools where on Friday mornings and other PD times, we're trying to give them those skills through the principal's leadership or others to begin. And so maybe for them, it is a couple of projects per year versus, you know, a more common focus. So that's why I would say we're yellow, and why I will tell you that it's going to be a multi-year process to get to a checkmark. Implement collaborative process that uses standards to guide teaching and learning district-wide to ensure target and, of course, outcome. So again, collaboration's been a key for us this year, and the key for all of our collaborations is time. It's why Friday mornings are so vital and why that movement by this board several years ago, I think this is, this is our third year or second year of that process, but it's been, it's been a difference-maker. It allows for collaboration. So some ideas of things that will, collaborative inquiry, AIW, teacher task analysis, professional learning communities, content leaders. So really, those Friday mornings in many ways are turning into collaboration time as opposed to PD time. It's really a merge of those two things, which I think is why it has been so well-received by our staff.
And that kind of goes back to the checked one, the first thing under student achievement because we have developed more of the school-based collaborative efforts.
Yep, absolutely. This one is red. It talks about smarter balance. After several years at the legislative level, smarter balance was sort of put on hold. The state has issued a new RFP, so in the next two years, we will find out what the state test is, but, and it may be smarter balance, but it might very well be something else. So that was taken out of our hands legislatively.
We need smarter school board members because that's an awful run-on sentence. I don't even know what it, I don't even know what it means. I've been staring at that one for a year, and I still don't know what it means.
It means we'll implement the smarter balance, be prepared, well-prepared to do it, but unfortunately, the state changed. Student achievement, develop supports for student success, enhance reading proficiency and align with the state mandated, state standards and progression in reading. That was a check last time, so again, we'll keep moving. Determine and secure various sources of support to sustain middle school LEAP programming for the 1617 school year and plan for the future of that program. That was a check because we were successful in implementing that this year. However, our 21st Century Grant that was written to continue to support that was unsuccessful again this year. The state went from 16, you know, the 21st Century Grants, which really come down from the federal level, are kind of under fire. I don't know how long those will continue to exist. But at the state level, there were 16 previously, there were eight this year. We were not one of those eight. In fact, I don't believe if there were any group, any groups in town that were successful in getting one of those eight grants. And there were a lot who applied, or several who applied. Student development, analyze and adopt dropout prevention, graduation plans to improve graduation rate in demographics and student groups. So a lot of work goes into that with Shirley, the horsemen, and, and community providers. Obviously, graduation rate is one example of a metric that we pay attention to. We have had, we have seen some significant growth, at least one-year growth, in some of our, in some of our demographic groups. It's a one-year, so we want to make sure it's not a blip, that it's a continual process. But the group that had 75% previously is up to about 85% graduation rate. So a lot of help there from community organizations through mentoring, through other programming. It's really starting to make a difference for us. Community engagement, effectively communicate the impact of the physical plant and equipment levy and the extension of the one-cent sales tax on district operations. While this really isn't fully a checkmark, it's a half a checkmark and a half a, we're not sure what. Obviously, the physical plant and equipment levy was well-communicated because it was voted back in for 10 years at a historically high rate of 80% or so, the passage rate. The one-cent sales tax, we certainly continue to advocate for that. It made it as far as the Ways and Means Committee this year. There's some hope it'll come out of legislation next year, but you've heard me say that before. So we'll, we'll see. We certainly have additional needs for our facilities for the one-cent sales tax, not the least of which might be growth to our south with the southwest arterial, as well as buildings, particularly some of our WPA area buildings and two of our middle schools where we need to do some renovations, particularly with some climate control, or at least can discuss some of the climate control issues that exist in those buildings. Focus on collaboration with the juvenile court system, law enforcement to lower insurability rates and lessen the referrals of children under 18. So let me find my talking points with that one. So a plan for changes was developed, approved by the state, and is now being used to craft a staff plan for the serve-at-risk students. In middle and high school plan, looks at the Connect program, which we are going to end that program because of the way it moves students into one building and then to another building and then back to that building. Adds to IJAG programming, which has been successful to, to our students. Life coach supports at the middle school, so students who have been identified as having some struggles as they're in middle school will have some support. High schools add, plans add ninth-grade supports and maintains the 10th Grade Success Academy. And of course, the ALC remains as a program to serve our students who would ultimately be at jeopardy of not graduating when that need arises. So good work has gone into, into that, and again, starting to show early signs of success with our graduation rate.
What grades are involved in that Connect program?
I'll let David speak to the specifics.
Which program?
Connect?
The Connect program was eighth grade transitioning into ninth grade. So there were second semester eighth graders, first semester ninth graders. Basically, we're taking that and moving that into the, what we found out in looking at the data over the last four years is that we were connecting with students who weren't making it in middle school, but we were connecting them to a program outside of the high school. Our goal was to connect them to the high school, help them to make that transition. But by pulling them out, they like staying out. I mean, every kid is different, but overall, the data was showing us that those students would end up back at the ALC in the upstairs program there. They, they wouldn't make it at the traditional high school as well as we had hoped. So instead of that, we're transitioning from the eighth grade directly to the high school, but having programming at the ninth grade level to help support them, as well as the 10th grade level where we do have a support program. And then we added at the middle school, IJAG programs, life coaches, other supports to help get them through eighth grade, through the middle school, that connects better to the high school.
There's a couple of things I forgot to mention there in regards to that is also Shirley has worked with juvenile court to attain for next year a juvenile court coach for the 1718 school year. And that's an individual who really works to help transition students coming out of the juvenile justice system into life outside of that. We, historically, when, when young people are in that situation, don't have a great deal of success once they're out of that structured environment. And so this coach position, which is a collaborative effort between the juvenile court system and the district, will help, you know, mentor, I don't know if mentor's the right word, but coach those, those young people into that transition into how to be successful into either a comprehensive, a large comprehensive high school or the ALC, wherever they're assigned. Anything else you'd add about that, Shirley?
No.
Implement and monitor focused initiatives around school attendance, school readiness, and summer academy as a partner of collective impact model, community-wide third-grade reading campaign. So again, this is, this is an interesting initiative for us. It's a checkmark. We are staffed and ready to roll with the summer reading academy this school year, but that funding for following school years is not in place. And so we will have some real conversations about our summer school, our summer academy. It's our full intention to make recommendations to continue to serve young people in the, in the summer around literacy and school readiness and those types of things. That model may look different. I don't know. I mean, it'll be certainly something that will change, and maybe even change for the better. Maybe that location, maybe we'll push more resources out to some of our community partners, allowing them to, you know, if the kids are already somewhere else, maybe it's going to be a matter of us supplying some teachers, some resources to those folks who already have those kids there to provide some time during their summer programming for literacy or reading, which they're already doing. But if we support that, you know, maybe we can, you know, double down on that and even do a better job with the, with the literacy piece.
It was really frustrating to watch the legislative process work through this year on this topic because I heard too many legislators saying, "Well, the kids in my district didn't show any advance," which means they totally missed the concept of that third-grade initiative and that it wasn't, it wasn't to advance them, even though I think we have some pretty impressive statistics of what it's done, but it was really to retain it.
That's right. So summer learning loss, getting rid of that lost summer learning.
Yeah, yeah.
If they can come back in the fall where they left in the spring, for many kids, that is itself is a victory.
Absolutely.
Just so the board is aware that all of the state funding for that summer programming has been cut.
Yep.
So we won't have it henceforth.
So they're consistent. They're not letting us down.
But yeah, we want to try and engage more students than what we do in summer school.
That's correct.
And try and reach them because that need never goes away.
Right. And I don't remember the, the data. We shared that previously, but somewhere, and I'm going to make these numbers up, so don't quote me exactly, Ally, but I think we, and maybe Nancy, maybe you have these numbers, but I think historically, we've invited 300-plus students, and we've had about 180 who attend. And so where, where those other 120 students and that, again, a lot of those kids are somewhere, so let's find that somewhere and provide some resources at those locations as opposed to, you know, maybe it's the concept of coming to a school on a yellow school bus in the middle of the summer that just doesn't happen. So maybe we can get those resources out where the, where those students are already at. So to be continued, obviously. For this year, the die has been cast and we're in motion, but where we go from here will be, where we won't go from here is just say, "Well, we're not funding, we're not going to do anything," but it's going to be, how do we do it better? You know, how can we be creative and do it better?
That's going to be at one school this summer, right?
This year, it is at Kennedy Elementary because of its size, and if it's air conditioning. Now, the foundation has been very supportive and supplies transportation, so location's not the same issue as it was, and also provides programming in the afternoon for students to, to experience a variety of field trips or, or programs that folks bring in, Iowa State Extension, and other groups who bring programs. It's similar to LEAP, so some supplemental activities in the afternoon. This has been the hardest one? No, I'm just kidding. Work with the school board to begin the planning process for renewing, updating, rethinking the district's strategic plan. That's a checkmark because it really just says, "Begin the process." So tonight really is part, we've talked with the school board a few months ago and then followed up with our Ed Program Subcommittee about some of the data where we've come in the last five years. And then really tonight, again, when we get to that point in the, in the agenda, we'll begin to, that sort of brainstorming session about what we want to look like, and I'll explain that as we get there, but with the goal.
So you assess the checkmark before we actually do it?
Well, I have a lot of faith in the next hour and a half.
They got us here, they're not going to let us go.
Monitor financial indicators following 1617 budget reductions ensure continued adequate financial resources. So as we've shared with our data previously, we are on track to be in a fiscally, a reasonably fiscally healthily positioned, and I, and I hesitate when I say that because we have made reductions, not this year, but previous years to get there. And with continued low supplemental state aid or support from the state, we cannot maintain that position. No district in the, in the state can maintain that position. So I don't say that to, as a takeaway, that, "Well, everything is good and low or no supplemental state aid in future years can be overcome." It can't. We must, you know, we are in a good position, particularly when you compare that to the last several years of, of funding. But we feel very secure. We didn't do any reductions this year. We're feeling good about next year being very safe as well, but down the road, 1.1% will not cut it. Prepare for anytime, anywhere digital learning environment for the 1718 school year that coincides with updated course objectives and delivery at the ninth grade level. So the, the teachers have been working hard, the ninth grade freshman classes, the common classes, to put curriculum in place to, it's not just one, it's one thing to buy everyone a computer, it's something different to have every teacher prepared to utilize that technology in an impactful way in their classroom. So that's really the work that Colby and David, and David Bowler have been putting in this year to work with the staff who will have those kids next year who have that, that laptop with them all the time. So now it's the process of purchasing and onboarding that technology. But I'm very excited about this because I think we're doing it exactly the right way. We're doing it, we're bringing the teachers along as we go, not just saying, "Well, now every kid's going to have a computer, figure out how to teach differently." But we've been working pretty hard on what that looks like for students. And we'll help drive, so many of these things are tied together, we'll help drive some of the, the activity or project-based learning we've talked about earlier because the technology can enhance and can enhance that. Helps students bridge the homework gap by piling wireless internet access on selected district bus routes. So we continue to find more and more uses for that. We have been up and running with that. In fact, I think we were even in newspapers as far away as California with this initiative. People have paid attention to what we're doing here. And so it's been successful at this point, and again, we will continue to monitor that data and see if more buses need to go that route. Again, the idea being students who are on longer bus routes have access to the internet and their homework, especially the ninth graders who will have that computer, but also for activities. If you've got students or neighbors or friends who have kids who are getting home at 11:30, 12 o'clock from a track meet that's, you know, two hours away, it's nice when they come home having much of that homework done because they were able to be on a bus with that technology versus walking in the door at 11 o'clock saying, "Oh, boy, I need something real quick now, I've got several hours of homework to do." So it has enhanced that, that access for, for our students, and we continue to monitor that access, but it's been relatively stable. We don't know that we've had any internet. Colby, anything you'd add to that?
Just to point out exactly what Superintendent Ron Gattin said, I would echo those same comments. One of the, which shouldn't really come as a surprise to anyone, but we're really seeing an uptick in activity, up to 60-some students using the fly-fi on school buses is on, on those activity buses that are going to sports, you know, find art venues, that they would have that downtime, if you will, while as they're on that rolling study hall, if you will, that they can be able to connect to the internet at any point in time. We do also have, if you remember, seven school buses were targeted for that. We also have two route buses, which is the south end of the district and the north end of the district, longest bus routes. And that's been relatively consistent. One of the reasons why we're really, don't want to expand at this point in time, we want to continue to monitor that, is to see where the anytime-anywhere learning initiative is going to take place and help complement that as well, too. Because I, I think for us to rush to judgment and say this was a success, I think it is successful and the uses that we've been getting out of this, but I really want to see what's going to happen when the all, the anytime-anywhere learning initiative takes place as well, too. I would venture to guess that we will probably be looking at doing some sort of an increase in the future. But once again, that comes with a financial expenditure that's associated with each one of those buses to be able to connect with internet.
But relatively cost-effective.
It is. It is relatively cost-effective between the vendors and the partners we've been using, and also the, the biggest one is the cellular carrier, and they have a great program for government municipalities to use the service. And we've been very fortunate in that. I wish we could get that for our own personal cell plans, but they won't offer that.
So when we, when we send a team on a motor coach versus a yellow bus, is it a, is it a portable hotspot that, that? that...
Unfortunately, no, it's not. On the yellow bus, our traditional school buses, it's actually hardwired into the bus system. We have a panoramic antenna on top of the user as well, too. So, there is some relatively permanent installation that's on that school.
So, that's a trade-off. I mean, a lot of people like the comfort of a charter bus, but the trade-off is, we can't guarantee access. I mean, individual kids have hotspots or data plans, but certainly not the same as when we set a yellow school bus. And we have had, even as early as today, had conversations with folks about how that might be used in case of an emergency or other things, where we can park buses at strategic locations if there are internet accessibility issues or whatever that would give, keep us up and running. So, lots of other things that finding its way into that. Develop a system to make data across the district more efficiently collected, more easily accessible, and more usable for staff or instructional decision-making, more readily available for your stakeholders. So, student data, how do you access it? How do you know where your kids are? How do you know what they don't know and what they do know and what they need to learn, whether you're the teacher, whether you're the parent? And so, we, Colby, again, I'll defer to you on this, but have spent some time this year analyzing various student information systems and which direction we should go with that.
Absolutely. One of the, this is a really daunting task when we looked at this, sort of at a bird's-eye view, 30,000-foot view, is because we have so many different pieces of silo data, if you will, that really don't interchange and interact with each other. So, that was one of the big pieces that we had to take a real step back to figure out what we were going to do. One of the big silo pieces of data that we have is our student information system. That collects a lot of data, but it is very, it doesn't necessarily interact with a lot of the other disparate systems that we have in place in the district now. So, what we've been doing right now is, we've had a select group of individuals that have looked into the other competing student information system in the state of Iowa, and we've been evaluating what that looks like and seeing if that would help leverage some of the ability for us to be able to work and be able to exchange data with some of the other systems in a more efficient manner than what we have now, too. The other piece that really, really has to allow us to take a step back, too, is looking at how our process and our workflow is, is that, you know, we really have to start looking at from not only an internal stakeholder's view, but the external stakeholders as well, as abiding by the Ohio model, only handling information once. I mean, that's a really big issue that we need to figure out as a district, and our district is not alone, too. But, you look at when we ask people to register for school, there's a lot of information that we're collecting, and then it's getting updated in those, once again, those siloed systems. So, how are we going to capture that information? How are we going to be, how will we be able to exchange that information into those various systems, but not putting an excessive burden on the individual stakeholder to put that information in? And then, the other piece is looking at the SIS, those various other systems, is trying to find a tool that is going to be able to mine that data, be able to bring it back in a very relatively easy, consistent format, that anyone can take a look at that data and be able to interact with it. Just-in-time information is what we're really looking at. So, while we made some really good steps this year, we have a lot more work to do on that front.
Thanks, Colby. Moving on to employee excellence. Develop staff recognition system that highlights outstanding work happening across the district. You'll notice on all the ones that are not a checkmark, it either says incorporated into 1718 prior initiatives, or it says pending legislation. So, some of those things that don't make it as a checkmark, again, we slide those across. So, we've been doing some significant work there. Certainly, we have had as a focus with our leaders that it's important, obviously, in their development to, and their staff's development, to recognize folks who are doing good work. We've also incorporated into the district-wide updates, you probably have noticed, the individual highlighting of teachers who are doing well. We have a new form on the hub that we'll share with parents that, or anyone who invites communities, kind of like the board does the board salutes, but a community member can, and Mike, I don't know if you want to talk about that, but log in, fill this out, and say, "Hey, I think, you know, Mr. Smith at such-and-such school does a great job and why."
So, one of the things that, as we look at the systematic piece, is figuring out how do we offer an opportunity and then be able to track it and monitor it. And so, we've been able to leverage some of the technology in our website to, we just finished the development piece of it, and we'll, here in the future, push that out and allow someone to go in and recognize a staff member, and when they denote what building that staff member is tied to, the system will automatically send an email to that staff member's administrator, so that they will be able to then pass that along, and it will also copy the HR office and allow us to track it kind of within the system, so that we can begin automating some of the process. And then, we're continuing to build out the follow-up to that, then, what, how do we systematize that piece to continue to recognize that? Do we pull it quarterly and put a listing of the things that are out there? And it also allows us to, because we can pull the data, generate story ideas, generate, you know, opportunities to pull out work and highlight it. So, that's just one piece of being able to leverage that technology that exists in the website, to be able to automate the process, so that we don't have to track down, how do we get it to the right person in the building? How do we do all these things? That we can, we built the system out, so that it will automatically do that piece for us.
Okay. Create a stronger team atmosphere by working with schools to strengthen and deepen the collaborative process, ensures teachers are working in teams, regularly review lessons and share best practices. So, I've got some talking points there, but basically, as I mentioned earlier, it comes down to that Friday morning and making sure that that time is used for collaboration in grade-alike groups or subject-alike groups, or whatever type of groupings, so that they really review each other's work and sort of do that critical friend piece about how they can improve their teaching. So, really, the heart of it is, again, that the time that that allows teachers to have, and we've got a few specific protocols that they can utilize to look at and help coach each other, quite honestly, as well as then having a teacher leadership grant and instructional coaches and content leaders to help guide that conversation as well.
Do you and the leadership have a sense that this is happening
Yes.
in every building, every Friday?
Yes. We make frequent visits to those buildings ourselves. We do the SAI II survey that, surveys from the teacher's perspective of that, and so, absolutely, I think, I know that this is happening across the district, and quite honestly, has ingrained to the point where if we woke up some morning and the time to do that no longer existed, I don't want to deliver that message.
No, any teachers I've heard from, they really value that time.
Yeah.
And they learn so much from each other.
And it's authentic, and it's powerful, and it impacts students.
Likewise, I've talked to numerous teachers and feedback on those Friday mornings. I always ask about the Friday mornings, how are they going? You know, are you accomplishing things? Yes, they like it. And this aspect here of this school-based decision-making and some of those other aspects, that in conjunction, I think makes our teachers kind of happier, so to speak.
Well, we want to empower them to make...
And they have a say in their curriculum and what goes on in their classroom.
Absolutely, as they should. We talked at the beginning of the year about, we've gotten pretty good, when we talk about educational, education sort of nationally, about talking about the science of teaching, and we need to spend some time talking about the art of teaching, and because it's when those two things kind of are married together, that you really have impactful classrooms. It's both an art and a science, and so, this time, some of it's science, but some of it's the art of teaching, too, and how do I impact young people?
Well, I felt that way, but I had signed this to Detective Barton, and I hadn't gotten any reports from him lately, so I was...
Because I sleep in on Friday.
I learned that halfway through the year.
That's a day off.
That is a day off. Thank you.
Provide employees ongoing information on community opportunities to improve health and wellness. Again, that's a checkmark. It was a pretty easy, but currently, email health and wellness information, district-level staff. We get a lot of, yeah, input and opportunities from community organizations. In the process of developing a page on the employee section, so that employees, a little more passive, if there are certain wellness issues that they're concerned about, they can learn about, or quite honestly, sometimes it just comes down to, where can I get the best deal on a health, you know, wellness facility or that sort of thing? What opportunities exist in the community? What do the hospitals have going in regards to the healthy living and wellness activities?
Is there no way of getting a discounted health insurance plan based upon any type of programs that we can offer?
We have not gone that route yet. I know that there have been, there are some plans like that. So, you're saying, if you have a healthy lifestyle, you pay less in health insurance?
Or if you have a program, if your employer has a program that provides these opportunities, I'll say, for exercise.
Well...
It has to go, well, probably has to go beyond that.
Right.
Well, I know, yeah, but have a program.
Yeah, it's mostly documenting that employees are doing that. We have not gone to that yet, but that certainly exists. So, as we always tell folks, and we've got a handful of visitors here, certainly not everything we're doing in the district is reflected in the prior initiatives. We always say that everything that's there will get done, but we're doing lots of other things as well. But, it is a way to have four, or five, six goals under the strategic plan. They're small enough bites that they can generally be actionable in a year, and then we report on how we've done with that. So, again, that was sort of as we end this year, and now, I'd like to enlist our questions. Transition into the draft of those initiatives that we would propose for next year. Again, knowing that next year is kind of an interesting year, because it's balancing a variety of things. It's the priority initiatives for next year, but also at a time when the strategic plan is being rewritten, and so, some of those initiatives, you know, how are those things incorporated? So, I'll go through this, certainly have opportunity for comment or question, but in a draft at this point. Under student achievement, we have five goals. Plan for updated standards, assessment, content, instruction, and resources, and secondary business ed, elementary math, and gifted and talented throughout the, through in-depth studies. So, basically, in our process, it's time to look at those issues, which I know are pretty, several of them, or all three of them, pretty near and dear to the board, and it gives us a great opportunity to look at the problem-based, project-based, student-centered based, whatever we want to call it, learning when we choose those standards and that curriculum. A particular area, in the areas of business education, you might imagine that that really should be a hands-on process. So, that's a good option for us to do that.
I have a question on that. One time, we, as a board here, kind of mentioned that we'd like to see some financial literacy in our curriculum.
And that would be part of this.
And is that, were this part of the business education implementation, is that a move in that direction, or?
Absolutely part of our study with business ed, but the new twist on it is that with the new social studies standards, there is financial literacy embedded within those. So, we aren't sure how to approach that within social studies, since we do not, except maybe in economics a little, we don't really embed financial literacy throughout social studies. So, we'll be coming at it from two different angles.
So, who said that we have to embed financial literacy in social studies?
That's part of the Iowa Core.
Do we have to listen to that?
It doesn't limit us from, yes, we do, but we don't have to, it doesn't mean we can't embed it somewhere else.
Oh, I mean, there's a point where this Iowa Core thing, I get it, but it goes back to the notion that curriculum should be a local thing.
Sure.
Within reason.
Within reason.
And we keep hearing how benign the Iowa Core is, so now, we're saying we have to embed financial literacy in the social studies program? Seems odd to me.
Well, but I think we have a lot of flexibility in how. I mean, as we talk...
It seems odd to us, too. That's why we think it fits in business ed better.
So, we let them know we're moving it to business ed?
And, well, and I think we can, if we need to check that box, we can check that box and say, "Well, of course, it's incorporated into economics to some degree." I mean, there are some...
Because economics is in the social studies curriculum, isn't it?
Correct. Yeah.
Yes.
It's kind of the social studies.
With sociology and...
So, I think there'd be some ways for us to do what we want to do as a district and satisfy...
I get really frustrated when I feel like we're being strong-armed on curriculum in any way, because I trust the group here. I trust our citizens. I trust people that can ankle-tackle us at high V and say, "Wait a minute, why are you doing this?" When in reality, we don't want to do it that way, and as long as there's a reasonable reason to do it the way we'd like to locally, then. Sorry, you hit a nerve.
Second bullet is a continuation of what we spoke about at length earlier. This year was a study year and a preparation year of our staff. So, next year will be to launch Anytime Anywhere Learning Initiative with enhanced curriculum delivery and new device deployment at the ninth grade level. So, we have, Colby and his team have had meetings with eighth-grade students transitioning to ninth grade and their parents. They've spent a lot of time working with staff. Now, it's just time to push the button and get it done, and we'll monitor that throughout the year, obviously, then, with the eye on taking it to the next four years over time. So, moving sophomore year, then freshman, sophomore, junior, then finally, to the point where the whole high school is at that point. Provide teachers with more diagnostic information to guide their instruction of students through implementation of the Iowa Tier system in pre-K6 reading. So, again, it's a lot about data and how do we inform our teachers what their students do know, don't know, where they struggle. Interesting sidebar here is that this morning, we found out that the Iowa Tier is not going to be supported by the state, so we will have to potentially amend this priority initiative. It's just part of their budget cuts.
I'm calm.
So, you will see a number four continuation that I mentioned earlier about the active engagement of students, actively engage students in their own learning through implementation of newer, enhanced, experience-based instructional strategies such as project-based learning. So, again, staying with that theme, continuing to move down that path to the point where that is in every teacher's sort of toolbox, if you will, and part of every student's experience.
No, I'm struck with the fact that the prior one touches on data for the instructor, and yet, a lot of going on in higher ed is data for the students, for them to know where they're struggling, where they're not achieving, and that goes into this concept of adaptive learning. And I wonder if there's some way, if it makes sense to include adapt, adaptation as part of the language here. It's one thing to talk about experience-based, project-based, but it's also about adapting the learning to the student's strengths and weaknesses. And this goes between, this goes to the difference between personalized learning and individualized learning, and I know I'm throwing a lot of buzzwords out, but I just wonder what your thoughts are on relative to adaptation for students.
Next year, we'll be implementing the screeners at the PK through sixth grade levels, which will give us not only diagnostic information for the teachers, but as importantly, for the kids.
Okay.
And so, the kids will be very much part of, what do I know? What do I not know? Where am I setting my learning goals? How will I help me get there? And teacher, how will you help me get there? So, it is what you said. It's about engaging the kids more in knowing where they're strong and where they're not.
Oftentimes, that happens in homework.
Exactly.
Doing something on the computer, and if I'm being told, gee, you got these three things wrong, let's go back and review.
Exactly.
That kind of adapts the student's weaknesses.
Exactly.
And we'll talk about that here in a few minutes, too, when we talk about report cards.
So, help me, what's the difference between personalized and individualized?
Individualized learning is, assesses you on the basis of your performance. Personalized says, gee, I know that I'm a more kinesthetic learner, I'm more, to be interactive versus visual or auditory.
Oh, okay.
So, it has to do with my learning preferences or my learning styles versus individualized learning, which is adaptive to what I've done right or done wrong.
Okay. So, they're not mutually exclusive?
They're not.
Yeah, okay.
They're not the same thing either.
Right.
Which is the same thing.
It sounds similar.
We want to focus next year also on co-teaching, so we want to maximize learning for students at all levels by enhancing the strengthening, and strengthening general education and special education co-teaching. So, it's having two professionals with a wide mix of, range of students' abilities in their classroom, and how that really leads to learning for all students. And we focused on that several years ago, I'm trying to think, seven, eight years ago, and we just want to circle back around and take some new learning with that and maybe drive that significantly deeper.
Approximately, how many of our classrooms, just ballpark, do we have co-teaching taking place?
K-12, that's a hard ballpark.
Just say elementary.
At elementary, we've had kind of a strong presence of it for quite some time. We see it as something that's getting stronger and deeper in its practice.
At the high school level, there's a little bit more of a separation, but maybe...
Do we co-teach in the core?
In the core areas.
Core areas?
So, when you take K-12, 40% of our classrooms, it's really a hard number to get to, but probably in that ballpark.
That's good.
For co-teaching, do you mean two classrooms would get together, so two teachers?
There's two teachers in the classroom.
Two teachers.
It's a relatively expensive model, because you have two teachers there, but it is impactful for our students, and so, we're trying to find ways that we can make that a reality, because one teacher's a gen ed, one teacher's a special ed, and that collaboration.
Okay.
Makes the students, but it's expensive, but that's what we want to study, but we believe it's worth that expense.
So, the outcome is for, it's geared toward the general ed kid or the special ed kid?
Both.
I understand we say both.
Yep.
Are we talking 51-49? Are we talking, what are we?
So, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question.
Well, I just, I can't... Well, I just, I, I can't remember the last time that I saw a goal written in education for regular ed, unwashed middle kids. I see 1,000 goals for special ed. I see 1,000 goals for talented and gifted, gifted, talented. I just don't see anything for the great unwashed middle of education, which was my passion when I was a teacher. And I just, I, I, so I'm encouraged to see general education show up here. I just hope that we really mean that.
Absolutely.
And we're not, and we're not, I'm not, I'm not questioning that we don't mean it, but I mean, when you really step back and think about it, are we talking about giving a better show for special ed kids by getting them more integrated into regular ed classrooms? Or are we talking about truly making something different and unique happen for the regular ed kids?
The research would say both happens in that setting if it's done right. And that, and so that's certainly our goal, that it impacts everyone in the classroom, from, from, from the, the special ed student who maybe has the, the largest struggle to the gen ed kid with the highest, with the least amount of struggle, however you want to say that, and then everybody in between in a co-taught classroom, because you've got a mix of teaching styles there and teachers who, who work, it does, it's that whole, you know, all boats rise in the high tide.
High tide, right, yeah. I, I mean, I team taught with Pam Fields, Carolyn Copus, great experience. I think, I think all the kids in the room benefited from that, clearly. I'm just, I'm just wanted clarification on the intent there. I just really wish that at some point, it could be more acceptable to say, we're going to give more resources to kids in the middle.
But, but we are.
Well, I, I think sometimes where you see that, and, and maybe I don't do a good job of, of pointing that out, but when we talk about, again, to, to overemphasize the Friday mornings, but when we talk about the collaboration that happens on a Friday morning, that's fantastic for all kids, especially even kids in the middle, because they're talking about the work that's happening in those classrooms and how do we make that, you know, how do we make that, that middle classroom rise as well as the, so it, it really is embedded in some, a lot of those other things, too, but.
Yeah, I guess my, I, I agree with you, Tom, but I, I mean, I look at the launch the anytime, anywhere learning initiative.
Sure.
That's not restricted to special ed or talented and gifted or.
But it's not any more special for the regular ed kid than it is for anybody else. We don't do anything that is exclusive, and maybe we do, I shouldn't say we don't do anything, curious what we do that's exclusive for the regular ed classroom. I just went to the awards assembly at senior with my son, who got a lot of great awards, hang him up, and I'm, I was sitting there thinking, what about the kid that went from Cs to Bs?
Right.
What about the kid that went from Bs to a couple A minuses? You know, I mean, where, where, yeah. I don't want to take, we don't have to go down that path. And I know that, listen, don't get me wrong, I think our regular ed teachers are terrific, don't get me wrong, but I just, I, I, one of these days, we're gonna, we're gonna do, we're gonna start beating the drum for the regular ed kids that don't beat their own drum. If we don't beat the drum hard enough for special ed, people beat it for us. If we don't beat the drum hard enough for talented and gifted, people beat it for us. And there's a whole flock of kids in the middle that if we ingest it, ingest it, inject it some resources into those kids, I, I wonder what the cool results would be that we could get out of those kids.
I'll tack it from a slightly different perspective. Talk about special ed. My sense is this co-teaching model actually takes some of the burden off of the general ed teacher, who oftentimes is distracted.
Oh, unquestionably.
Because of behavioral issues in the classroom.
Agreed.
So if you look at the model from the AEA recently, I mean, the last few years, the amount of direct services being presented, provided by AEA has decreased exponentially. They're coming in, they're consulting with teachers, and so it's left to the, the school, the teacher, the average gen ed teacher to do it. Well, if you've got a co-teaching environment, you've got additional resources in there that are not taking away from the middle kids, and is focusing more attention on those kids who need it. So, you know, from that standpoint, you know, I think it is all boats rise.
Yeah, so there's one. I mean, how much time have we spent as a board, in terms of percentage, talking about special ed kids? How much time have we spent talking about gifted, talented kids? And how much time have we spent talking about boring, regular ed classrooms? I, I bet the percentage would be frightening if we were to go back through school board discussions, ed program discussions, and take a look at the percentage of time, because that regular ed classroom is probably 75% of our kids.
I think it's a very good point.
So would we get to the third half, to the, the, the third, third of our meeting, and we talk about updates to strategic plan, that would be a great time to reiterate that fact, because if we can get that embedded in the strategic plan, then we will see specific targeted priority initiatives around that, at least for the next five years.
We're doing a bunch of stuff that is, that isn't necessarily going to show up on the piece of paper. I do understand.
But I would submit that what they've described does address that issue you are addressing, which is by, by having more resources in the classroom, you're focusing on everybody getting better.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe not to the degree that you'd like, but I think.
It's random. It's random, it's, yeah.
So it really gets hard for us when we talk about student achievement versus student development. Quite honestly, so many of the next things I'm going to cover are really also about student achievement, though they land in other areas. So that's maybe something else for us to consider as we come up. But if we look at student development, top one, explore and plan for updated instructional delivery model for students with behavior challenges. You know, we have some, had conversation at the board level, certainly at the administrative level, about the continuum, continuum of programming that's available to us, also about that continuum that is provided or outsourced by some other folks, and what is the right mix of that, what's the right location of that. And so that's a conversation we're committed to having next year as well. Research and explore the addition of a transitional kindergarten program. For those of you who aren't familiar with that, that is a, an opportunity for some young folks to do kindergarten twice. They do transitional kindergarten the first year and regular kindergarten the second year. It's happening in a handful of places, and they report good results, because we know students who come to first grade fully prepared, get to third grade better prepared to middle school. So we are looking at the possibility of a transitional kindergarten program, had some early conversations with other superintendents around this. There are some, some, some difficulties there. What they would report is that most of those difficulties are in telling some parents, no, your kid is actually ready for kindergarten, because you will have more folks who want their kid in that transitional kindergarten. And quite honestly, the data wouldn't support that. They would say, no, they're ready for, you know.
Are these children starting at a younger age kindergarten, or?
No, they would probably come through us through preschool and be at, be five and be identified as old enough for kindergarten, but maybe they're not quite where they would, would need to be to be successful with reading and all the parts of kindergarten. So we would just identify that this is a student who could use two years of kindergarten, first year is transitional, the second year is a full kindergarten.
See, you're not really.
The districts who have done that are seeing a sustained achievement of those students through third grade, which of course, it's all about getting them to third grade reading. And so we're not completely sold on that, which is why it says, research and explore and share with the board, and certainly be conversation at our ed program, some committee around that, that piece of data. But there are some, there's enough success happening out there to, to pique our interest, but.
Has this been around for, for quite a while, or?
I'm only familiar with it for the last couple of years.
Okay.
There, I mean, there are a few hiccups with it. State doesn't always love the idea, because it means paying for an extra year of education.
Yeah, it's an extra $6,600.
That's right. We really want to focus on, on, on all these, but number three, increase the number of students taking post-secondary coursework with specific emphasis on removing barriers for unrepresented populations. So when we say post-secondary, we're talking about AP classes, we're talking about concurrent enrollment through NICC and, and the school district, we're talking about PSEO, where kids actually go to one of the local colleges and universities for a class. And we, we have decent numbers there, but we want to expand those numbers. We want all or a large number, also a big number, but a large number of our students who have experienced some aspect of the next step, if you will, whether, again, that be AP or concurrent or post-secondary. And we want to make sure that we are removing barriers for all of our students, because that would suggest that maybe we need to do some work there to make sure that all of our students feel that that should be a part of their educational experience.
We're mostly focused on the trades as well as.
Absolutely.
Future collusion.
It's, it's everything from, you know, math on campus at a, at a four-year institution to the, the industrial tech concurrent enrollment pieces to the nursing concurrent enrollment pieces that we have through NICC. So it really is that entire range. But it helps students, we believe, walk across that stage, which they'll do here in a week and a half, with an idea of where maybe they're headed next, so that we have fewer students walk across that stage and wake up the next morning thinking, I wonder what I should do today. So we really want all of our students to have some experience with that. Support enhanced comprehensive cultural competency in all secondary schools. We have had some cultural competency training in the past, but it's often come in, in, in sort of one-time doses. Washington Middle School really has led the way with that, with our, with our secondary, or secondary schools. If you're familiar with their moxie squad and how they utilize their student body and work with their students and their staff around cultural competency. And so we're going to move down that direction with our secondary schools, much like at our elementaries, where they're all required to have a character education, thank you, program. So all of our elementaries have a character education program. Now we're going to require our secondaries to, to focus efforts in this coming year on their cultural competency programs, so that, and again, Washington is, is seeing some early success with that. They've been invited to, pretend I turn around, they're presenting for somebody else at city council or other groups. And anyway, they've kind of piloted that for us, so moving down that path.
Where would that be incorporated into, let's see, a secondary curriculum or department or?
It could be in a variety of, in a variety of areas. With, with Washington, they incorporate that into their, not eighth period, but what are their, into their.
Middle of the day.
They have a, they have a.
Extended learning time.
Thank you, extended learning time, where kids aren't in a specific class, and they, and they, that's a time that they utilize at the secondary, at the high school level would be some, some times incorporated around the lunchtime or that sort of thing. What would we look on that? So.
Questions about that?
Develop long-term sustainable after-school activities program at the middle school level. As I indicated earlier, LEAP, as it, as we've known it, it was kind of on life support this year, induced by some generous donors, and the Foundation for Dubuque Public Schools, and some partners, we were able to sort of make it happen. We will continue to endeavor to make that happen, but we need to find a way that is sustainable. It does become a burden for some of those organizations as well. We were not successful in getting our 21st Century grant, and as I mentioned, there were many other organizations who work in that same space in Dubuque who applied for grants who were also not funded. So it doesn't feel like to us that that probably is a long-term, term solution to, to grant funded. So how do we have that same impact of getting kids actively involved in their school, feeling tied to their school? You know, the kids that, that fit the traditional mold, that's easy, they play sports, they do drama, they're in the band, but what about those kids who aren't connected in any of those three ways? How do we tie them to our, to our middle schools to help them feel like, it's not just a place I go from, from 7:30 to 2:30, but it's a place I want to be during some of these other times as well, so.
And we put a dollar, generally, a dollar figure to that, haven't we? What it would mean to?
Yeah, we have some, we have, if we use the, the 21st Century grant model, it's, it would be very expensive. What we have learned is that there are plenty of other providers who are willing to sort of do this in kind, you know, step forward. We also have staff members. Some of our most popular programs are the brainchild of a staff member and talking with, with kids, and you'd think, well, I don't know how that's going to fly, and it does. I mean, again, what we're going to talk about is the, the knitting group over at Washington. And that was, I don't know how middle school kids want to do knitting. Well, apparently, you know, or, so again, it's that whole finding something that, that the kids are interested in, that maybe a staff member's passionate about also, and then, you know, it doesn't always have to be elaborate, put them on a bus and go to a field trip somewhere. It can be at the school and developing those relationships.
Do we have any grants that are non-restricted in that, how they can be utilized?
No.
Are all our grants restricted?
I don't, I don't even know of a grant that you could, it's not restricted, that's the name of their.
Is there ever a way, you know, how we have activities, you have the drama, you have athletics, that you could make LEAP an activity, that it does have its own, you know, the money is designated for that?
And that's what we'll look at.
Yeah.
There'd be a cost with that, obviously, but that's what, that's what this year is.
But, you know, that we can make it ongoing, like we do our drama and, and athletics. It's a LEAP program that we continue, and we have so much money for it. It doesn't have to be the elaborate money that we had with the grant, but something.
General budget.
Yeah, a general budget for it.
But that's the problem.
That, see, that's exactly the problem.
I know, but if we take from something else, I don't know what.
Yeah, that's, I mean, with the 1%, supplemental state aid, just maintaining what we currently have gets difficult, much less adding to that.
Because it could be the challenge to figure out where we can take a little from different places and make it a standing.
Well, certainly, that, that's why that's on here the way it is. We thought maybe we had crossed that bridge a couple of years ago, but we'll back at it, because we remain committed to the idea that students do best when they have a relationship with the school, with the teachers, outside of the traditional classroom period. And so for some students, that's LEAP, and other students, it's something more traditional. So, but we know that they do best when they feel.
Doing the activity, yes.
We can try, but again, that's years, we, we, you know, so like DRA grant, we can certainly write grants to that, but again, it becomes.
You're dealing with it every year.
We want, yeah, we were trying to find a sustainable, long-term solution, like you're talking about, as a budgetary item or something to say, this is what we're going to do. So we know for at least a certain length of time that we're going to maintain that, because it's our choice to maintain it, not.
It's an activity that we're adding, yes.
Yeah. All right, where are we at? Community engagement. Pilot and make modifications to an elementary standard-based progress report to more effectively communicate student learning to students and families. So it's what was brought up earlier, how do we communicate to students, to their parents, you know, not in a ECB, you know, kind of a better form, but a, but a realistic plain language, this is what you know, this is what you don't know, this is where you're at with those. We've done a lot of work at a large committee, Nancy led that committee this year, talked with our ed program subcommittee a time or two. And so we're going to pilot it next year, side by side with the, with the current report cards, so that we can elicit feedback from parents about what they like, what they don't like, did we get the language right? You know, that's a big issue for us. When we write things, a lot of times they come out in sort of education ease, and so we want to work with families to say, do you understand what this bullet means? And if not, how can we rewrite it in a way that's really cut and dry? And we, parents, we believe, will be very excited about that, because it really helps them understand, here's a specific skill that my son or daughter doesn't have in math, in reading, in whatever, that I can now help them with. You know, it's not, it's not as, it's a lot more granular, and so students and families will be able to, and teachers, of course, will be able to.
That was presented at ed programs, what kind of samples of that, and they were very informative. I know that teachers are, I don't know for sure how many teachers are going to be piloting it this coming year, but it looks very effective and addresses what Craig brought up initially, I think, about the student knowing what they don't know and the parents knowing kind of what they don't know. And very effective. Want to comment about it, Nancy?
We decided that we wanted every school to be able to be involved in the pilot. And so we reached into our teacher leadership system and said, let's look at our content leaders. At the elementary level, they're called content leaders. There's one in each school in reading, one in math, one in science, one in social studies. And so each of those content leaders in each school, whatever grade level they're at, will pilot the new progress report. So that will give us that ongoing conversation with them as they come for their teacher leadership meetings, and they'll inform a lot of changes that'll be needed likely, as will parents, that'll help us to make those changes. But out of that comes, oh, in addition, the art, music, and physical education teachers will pilot it in their content standards as well. So we're going to have about seven people in each school then that will be, will be working with the new standards-based progress report. And going back to your point, Mr. Barton, about the, what about all students? What about those students who are in the middle, who are not at either end of the continuum? Every child will have access to saying, based on this information that we have, what do I know relative to my learning outcomes for the year? Where am I today? How can I chart my way to a next level with that? How can I chart my way to a next level with that? And then we'll be involved with some interventions, we'll be involved with some progress monitoring, where the child will be intrinsically involved in saying, where am I now? Where am I going to get to? And how will I know if I've gotten there? So I think it's going to be an exciting year. Our challenge will be to communicate the philosophical shift from the EMNV to met, the standard is met, or the standard is not met yet, but we're on our way to it. And so to communicate that philosophy change, we'll take some good communication, and Mike and Tricia are already helping us get some information ready to go with, to help our families and help our kids to understand it and be a part of it and to join in the feedback.
Just to review, how frequent are those progress reports listed at the elementary?
It's an interesting question that you raise, and that's, we've had quite a bit of committee conversation about that. Now that we have electronic accessibility to our teachers' grade books, some districts don't publish a progress report at all. They say to parents, here's your, here's your access, go in anytime, and you'll see where your child is in relation to the learning outcomes expected. We think there's a possible need to publish at the end of each of the three trimesters, but that's still in conversation with the big group to say, maybe not. Maybe we should, we should invite parents into that portal every day if they want to see where the learning mastery is at that point. So, yet to be determined on that.
A lot more work for the teacher, though.
Yes.
In putting that, if they want to keep it on a weekly or daily basis.
That's right. It is. And yet, when we're, when we know what our intended learning outcomes are, we better be about that. And we better help every child to know, where am I now? Where am I going? And what's my role? It's back to the, how much ownership do I have in my learning? I need to know where I've got to go that I haven't gotten yet. I haven't met those standards yet. And likewise, the teacher's job, be it individualized, be it personalized, whatever the philosophical direction of that, we have to all be about getting to those learning outcomes.
Parent involvement is key, as you know.
It is, absolutely.
And we also know that, just as there's a curve of students, there's a curve of parental involvement, and you're probably going to have to do more than you want to do...
Yes.
...in terms of reporting, because some people won't go get it.
Yes, absolutely right.
So it's a training process as well for the parents.
Absolutely right, yep. It's that homeschool partnership. When we can partner between home and school, it's the child who's the benefactor, you know? Everything is stronger, everything is better when we're working together. So we hope this will be a catalyst for a stronger connection, a stronger shared contribution to those learning targets.
Lots of parents just want to know how they can help.
Yep.
And this will help us tell them, this is how you can help your child.
It will. Of all the goals we've articulated, if we're successful with this one, that will have more of an impact than...
If I must spend a half an hour, an hour with my son or daughter tonight, tell me where I'd best spend that half an hour or hour when it comes to schoolwork. Reading, is it math? Something specific about reading?
And where are we trying to get to? Let's be focused on it.
And that's all very powerful, but I hope everybody recognizes that, to your point, Craig, that pilot has to be different in every one of our schools because we have, we have parents on the west end of town that are going to dial into that sucker every day.
Every day.
And then we're going to have other parents that have no, you know, either no interest or no, that's just simply daunting for them. So how do we get that same really important information to them? How do we engage them? That was one of the things I really think we need to think about as we move forward in our strategic plan is how we engage them, because we're not, I don't think we're, I don't think we're doing that, and that's not a criticism, that's the reality. We've got to find different ways to engage people. We have over-engaged and then disengaged, right? So, but we have to have, and I'm hoping that our, it is building-centered, and it is, as you said, it is driven by the school.
Yep.
Who knows their student, who hopefully knows their neighborhoods, who knows their parents better than anybody else, to give them the flexibility to say, it's going to look different at Carver than it's going to look at Marshall or, you know, Lincoln.
And quite honestly, so that's why we're doing the pilot the way we're doing it, so that there are four instructors at every building, so we can get a wide range of input from parents. The communication piece might look very different. I mean, we may send out weekly reminders to parents. We may do report cards in paper in some schools and not in others. What do those schools tell us works most effectively for their students and for their families? And so we don't want to make a generalization to say, this is how we're going to do it, but we want to, we want to communicate the same information because that's what's good for, because, but we might communicate it differently. We might communicate it at different times, we might, you know, and how do we, if it's going to be computer-based, then that, okay, how does everybody have access to that? So we want to make sure that we're sensitive to that, which is why the pilot's going on for a year. So, the next thing, effectively communicate to the community the impact of the instructional support levy on district operations. It's time for us to go to the voters and ask for an extension to the instructional support levy, and we will share more information about that. But it is what brought us all-day, every-day kindergarten many, many years ago. It is a levy that directly impacts the size of our teaching staff, particularly at the kindergarten level. So in an era where you hear me talking about transitional kindergarten and four-year-old preschool, it would be interesting for us to then go to half-day kindergarten or something like that. I'm not saying that that's what we would do, but that's how important the instructional support levy is to us, and so we will continue to have conversations around that.
Well, if we did that, it would certainly pass the second time.
That most likely.
Riots in the streets.
We want to commit to conducting a district-wide equity audit as our third bullet. There was a time when, as part of state visits, the state did that. They've kind of backed away from that. So we don't know what we don't know, so we want to make sure that we go back at our equity audit and where are we at with that, and what do we, it'll just be an opportunity for us to learn some things about our district. We want to engage community partners to explore potential new delivery models, to expand the reach of summer reading support for elementary schools. So I just told you there wasn't any money for it, so now I'm saying we want to expand it, and that is where we're at. And so how do we do that with our community partners? How do we do that in a way that, again, is where it reaches out to where those kids are? I mean, maybe it is a combination of at-school for the kids that that works for, and maybe it's a, it's an assignment of resources, whether that's staff or whatever, out into some of our community organizations that already sort of embrace those kids in the summer. But, you know, we have to, we've talked, this board has talked a lot about sort of breaking down some of those barriers and the, and this is the next step in both the summer school, but also the relationship with our partners in the community.
Are we hoping that if we get this partnership, that we'll be able to expand this, I know you say expand, but to all the students that need it, like take the most need-based...
That's, sure, so we have 300, again, ballpark figures, so don't quote me, 300 who we invite, 180 who show up, so where are those other 120?
Right.
You know, some of them aren't available, but some of them are, and they're just somewhere else. And so how do we reach out to where there are pockets of those kids? And oftentimes, that's with our community partners, and then how can we support them in reading programming during their summer program?
Right. Well, we initiated it, obviously, because we had the financial support from the state, but because we had to make that through grade initiative, reading initiative. So I hope that maybe if we can find the partnership to make it happen, that we expand it past the third grade level so we keep the kids engaged that need it.
And by expanding, also, I think you may, you would go to them, to where they are.
Well, maybe. We'd have to be invited first, but we'll have those conversations to see how can we do that.
Well, what you're talking about, Tara, is really a modified calendar. I mean, if you really think about that, I mean, that's really what you're talking about, right? How we keep everybody engaged through what is, you know, I suspect it's not just third grade reading that we focus on.
Well, I'm saying that like our summer reading support in the past years has been trying to get those kids that were going to hit third grade this coming year, and now that that's not there, you know, hopefully we continue, you know, the kids that really do need it, that have been struggling with retaining even during the school year, continue. So I don't think it'd be, you know, every student, but...
Well, and I think that's the conversation around balanced calendar or extended school years. It doesn't have, are we going to get to a point where the school year doesn't have to look the same for every kid?
Right.
You know, that there's the 180, but then there's some flexibility of that program. Again, the cost, Kevin keeps staring at me like, do you have any idea what's going to cost? But how do we get to...
Kevin will figure it out.
But we talk about a flexible calendar, a balanced calendar, that might look different for every child. And we kind of do that now with ESY and with the third grade reading initiative. How do we take that to a different scale? I mean, so lots of possibilities, but...
What's kind of frustrating is I read the legislative kibosh of the third grade reading program. In there, they said, but they still encourage to districts who have a third grade reading program, totally non-funded, but encouraged.
And we believe that, obviously, funding will always be somewhat of an issue for us, but if there's any way we can make that happen, it's just something we need to take on. Where are we at here? The last one. Launch an e-backpack solution to more effectively share community offerings to families and students. You know, currently, when there's something that needs to be disseminated, they have to send in a request, they send us the flyers, they prepackage those flyers, they get sent out on transportation, they get handed out in folders to kids. So how do we get to an e-backpack so that there's a solution for, you know, if I need to know about when certain camp is or certain, I go to the website and I log in, and there's the information about the Boy Scouts, or there's the information about the Loris, whatever they're sponsoring, or the UD or the Clark, I don't want to, but, you know, that type of thing. But then again, always being cognizant of the fact that if there are some folks who don't have access that way, how are we sharing information with them? So. Effective resource management. Finalize design and begin construction of a new swimming pool. So by the time we sit here next year, not only will we have finalized design, but somewhere in some capacity, dirt will be being moved to begin construction of the swimming pool, hopefully well in advance of the demise of the current one at Hempstead.
Amen and hallelujah.
It's been a six-year conversation to get to this point, and so now we just want to keep swimming. We don't want to tread water anymore.
Dirt is already being moved with that tanker a week that's seeping somewhere.
Somewhere, yeah.
We don't, we're not sure where.
That's the Hempstead Aquifer.
So the plants are so luscious.
Bee Branch West. It's the Bee Branch West. It's coming out of Hempstead.
Where is that water going?
Yeah, that's where all that water is coming from.
Next two under this one. Study the possible transition of the district student information system and develop appropriate next steps based on decision. So again, how do we communicate with each other, with teachers, with parents? And so it's that student information system that we continue to work on. That's really Colby's area, as well as create a plan for electronic storage of district records. Our microfiche machine died, I'm not kidding. Not completely died, but we thought we were pretty panicked for a while because we still have things on microfiche. So how do we move into the 21st century with the electronic...
How far back are we required to keep records?
Yeah. You'll have my HR records laying around here anywhere, do you?
For the right price, Tom.
My graduate record.
It's a foilier record, too. Microfiche Prohaska, too, yeah.
Well, you know, graduation records and student records...
Kids are on tablets.
Transcripts, pretty much forever.
Tablets.
Hey, Ed, I'll fill out the foyer record for you.
On the cave walls.
I don't know about your, I don't know about your, I don't know about your HR record time, but we do have your transcripts. I think we have a copy for Ed and Ally that we'll hand out after the meeting. Employee excellence. Again, continue to work on in a variety of areas with our leaders, our administrators, our teacher leaders, but one specific area we want to focus on this next year is working with evaluator training programs so that we have some consistency across the district on how teachers are evaluated. We, the state generally does a five-year cycle where they produce new evaluator training. They didn't do this, that, this time, where at that five-year mark, 10 years ago, Nancy and I went to Des Moines many, many times to get the training and came back and did the training for the district. The last time, five years ago, it was done through the AEA, and this time, the state has said, well, I guess we don't have money for that, just do something you've already done, and we don't want to do that. We want to continue that progression. And so we're working with a new teacher center, which is something that we talked about at our last support services meeting and ed programs, I believe, because the contract was coming through there. So that's going to be a focus for us. One of the focuses with the administrative development. Next one, provide teacher leaders with the leadership development in instructional coaching and mentoring. So we've done, we've done some work with our teacher leaders, but we really want to talk about, how do you coach? How do you mentor? Their job is slightly different, obviously, than an administrator from a leadership perspective, but it really is, how do we continue to bring value to the system by coaching and mentoring our peers? And so we're going to start working on that.
It would be great if we could include a little bit of heart in there rather than just head.
Yep.
I mean, our administrator evaluation is just, it really, you can do all that stuff in there at a competent level and still not have anybody who'd follow you into battle. And that's really where we've missed the boat over the years, because this leadership thing is really about heart.
Absolutely.
So anything we can do to get some of that in there would be great.
Well, and that's, if you go back to our guiding principles at the very top of the page, that kind of speaks to that a little bit, too, that all these things, you know, inspire and energize workplace environment with high expectations, strong leadership, and professionalism that fosters a culture of excellence. We do, those should be overriding principles, including this part of this. Standardize and align district employment practices with the new requirements of the Iowa law regarding public employment. So the world shifted significantly on, I can't remember the date, we had a board meeting that day.
That day.
February 17th, when it came to public employment. And so how do we, how do we continue to have that relationship with our employees and put things in handbooks? And just be really standardized about our processes so that people aren't taken by surprise when it comes to how we're going to operate. And then, again, continue to work on implementing staff recognition system to highlight examples of exemplary work. So that's the one that we pulled forward from this past year. All right. Any questions about this?
I like it.
Now we got...
Period three, like a hockey game or...
An hour and a half later, we got to the important part of the meeting. So just as a little background, for folks on television or in the audience, so five years ago, the board developed a strategic plan, and it really focused on the five areas of student achievement, student development, community engagement, effective resource management, and employee excellence. And that's what I've just reported out here. So the board really is responsible for those five goal areas as were, as well as those goals across the top in blue. Then the administration works with the board collaboratively on the purple and the green piece of that. So if you back up five years, and where we've come as a district in five years, I think that we forget that in the day-to-day life that we live, but it's fantastic where we're at with technology, where we're at with empowering our teachers and our buildings to make decisions, to get back to some of that art of teaching piece, to how we've made life better for all of our students, and how educationally we're seeing some, we're just in a better place. So our commitment when we wrote this plan was for it to be a five-year plan, and we revisit the plan in five years. And so that's where we're at today as a beginning step, is what does the board, as a representative of, elected representatives of the community, think that we need to tweak, to change, to throw out, to add to the strategic plan? And again, this is just the very first opportunity to voice that. We don't anticipate being done with this until November, December, potentially January, but we want to get a start on it this summer, which is why we want to really now stop talking and start listening. I guess I've done all the talking. I'll stop talking and start listening, but what the board sees us going in the next five years. Knowing, of course, that in that mix will be a board election, and so we may, you know, obviously, we'll have, Mr. Byteen won't be joining us for the finalized, so there might be some changes as board members change, but this will be a lengthy process because we want to get it right, because this has been a powerful document. We made the commitment when this was done that this wouldn't be something we had to search for and blow the dust off of, that we talked about this, that we lived this, and we've been very successful at that, both at the board level and at the building level. You, any building you walk into, you can find a copy of this, and they use it on their PD, they use it in all of their conversations when they're talking about what their plans will be for next year. The priority initiatives that we've listed was an outgrowth of that to keep us in front of the community and continue to sort of evaluate movement on that. So I would want nothing more than for us to continue and build on the processes we have in place, because I do think it focuses us in a way that is excellent. We've had the opportunity to share this at the Iowa Association of School Boards and other places, and it's amazing how many similar documents you've now found around the state. So that's a compliment to the board and to where we've come. So we've had some conversations with district leadership, with other groups, we kind of floated ideas out there just to get the board thinking. Tammy apologizes she cannot be here tonight, she is at a funeral, but she did send me an email, so maybe I'll just start by reading what her thoughts were and give everybody an email, so maybe I'll just start by reading what her thoughts were and give everybody else a chance to think, but, and she just sent me four bullet points that she would like us to consider as we develop the next round of the strategic plan, and not a lot of these things aren't going to be earth-shattering, Lee New, if you know Tammy, you know, these are things she's passionate about. So, look at magnet schools and what they can mean for our schools, with very specific focus areas of innovative learning, but do this, we must really embrace it fully as a charter school. This can be done with elementary schools, middle schools, potentially even high schools. Number two, require meaningful financial literacy for high schoolers who can more fully appreciate the importance of knowing how to manage your finances and all it entails. Three, expand the opportunity to encourage more students to get trade certification. If they do not want to go to college, we need to produce more plumbers, electricians, construction workers. This can be combined with entrepreneurship and business classes. And then her last thing was, all of these could be achieved from looking at graduation requirements. So she's advocating that we look at graduation requirements. So I hear a lot of things in here that was brought up throughout this meeting about, you know, focusing on real-world learning, I think.
Yep.
So, at this point, I really, we'll stop talking for a few minutes and we'll take a lot of notes.
Specifically, what do we mean by a magnet school? What does that really mean?
Yeah, that's what I'd like to understand.
Well, we don't have to go too deep.
We don't have to get into that deep.
We don't have to go that deep?
No, it's just one idea.
So, my hope would be with that is to, if that's a direction we're interested in, next fall, take a trip to Cedar Rapids and some of the other districts who have a significant number growing, with whoever wants to go and poke around and see if that's a good fit for us.
Well, Stan, I would guess I would throw out that in terms of the major categories within the strategic plan, I don't feel any great need to alter what are the five pillars of our overall strategy. I think they adequately cover areas that, you know, and I think it's been proven out through the various review processes that, you know, we're hitting on those things we should be talking about. I think where you can start coming up with new ideas is you start looking further down into it, and I don't want to get into the weeds either today, but I guess, under student achievement, student development, I think, you know, we've reached a point where we have embedded technologies. I think we need to look at technology now as an implementation of learning, as opposed to simply the promulgation of technology. So obviously, that's going to impact a lot of our decisions. How do we change the learning environment? The biggest threat to public education today is these, you know, private institutions, the for-profit, the, those out there that want to unseat public education. I think we, in order to be competitive, we need to look at these models of delivery, like adaptive learning and project-based, and where I would like to see more innovation perhaps is in the area of, what are the new learning models? What is being successful out there? What does the data show? There's a lot of new models that are proven, and we have to be careful that we're not just simply throw, we can't be, we can't be a Petri dish, our kids can't be in a lab. But I think we owe it to them to look at these new models where there is some success, where there are models of success, and expand our vision in terms of, what does it mean? What's that relationship between the teacher and the student, and the tools that they have at their disposal? So, it's a generalized thought, but I think that's what you're looking for. How do we, how do we change the way we're delivering education? How do we evolve it, perhaps is a better word, to meet the needs of, you know, 21st-century learners?
You notice I'm not writing, but Nancy, David, and earlier you're all writing periods, so we are capturing this.
I like Tammy's bullet point about making sure that our educational, this provides education for the non-four-year college students.
Yep.
And I know that the big thing is going to be to change the graduation requirements, to allow more flexibility, where kids could take the trades classes instead of taking more, let's say, more math, or more film study, or some, I know I've said this before, I think we are high in the fine arts requirements. I know you can't, you can't add, you're not going to be able to add graduation requirements. If anything, you're going to have to adjust them, if anything, maybe lower them, we even talked about that at one time. But tweak them such that you give the kids the opportunity, particularly, obviously at the secondary level, to choose a pathway, because they are constricted now by their four-year curriculum, if they, you know, if they want to, they're kind of pigeonholed into a four-year curriculum, and they don't have that flexibility to take more of the arts classes, manual arts, manual training, whatever, small engines, whatever are the other classes we have, woodworking, et cetera.
What about if there, you know, there are requirements in, you know, math, science, all those areas? If we find a way to offer those technical classes, find a way that those requirements are already embedded, you know, how we can get math, because, you know, plumbing and electrical, all of those require a lot of math, so find a way to, without changing the requirements, that you can engage those other.
The problem that we run into there is certification often.
Well, for a teacher.
Right.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, but I think we as, we as a school district should have some flexibility in what our requirements are, and then we have certified teachers, you know, we don't make them astringent in a certain area.
Oh, you're talking, yeah, you're talking about something else, but to match that extra type of class, you know, if they take it at NICC, or we are, do hire a professional to teach those classes, find a way to intertwine the requirements of those core subjects into those. So, maybe it's not three years or whatever it is of math, maybe this electrical course will fill.
Qualify as a math requirement.
Qualify, yes, that's what I mean, yes. Find a way to intertwine those extra, or extra learning, not your college-bound kid to a more of a trade environment.
If we sincerely want to make a change in this, we've got to somehow tweak our requirements.
So I think our, I think our teachers need to be kid people, and I think they are more than ever, and I think our administrators need to be teacher people, and I think they are more than ever. And so I would applaud any effort that we can make to continue to set higher standards and teach the skills, reinforce the skills to administrators on how to be good teacher people, and to continue to reinforce the skills with our teachers on how to be good kid people, how to motivate. Any kid that's ever gotten fired up from being in a classroom, a teacher somewhere inspired a kid, there was a moment of inspiration. Whatever we can do to make those moments of inspiration more likely to happen, well, I'd be all for that. I get nervous myself when I, because I can go down the path of a thousand curriculum ideas, and I realize I'm a financial advisor and not a teacher anymore, so I don't know that that's a good idea, because I think we have a staff that's really good at coming up with that stuff. But I think the general stuff and making sure is, that as board members, we, whatever we come up with in a strategic plan, we rally around common philosophy on supporting Stan and administration. To me feels like where maybe we got to look at focusing some energy, because we, you, we're not the same district as we were five years ago. Five years ago, we had a lot, we had a lot of work to do today. Five years ago, we had a lot, a lot of work to do. We've come a long way, and it's rewarding to see that.
Other thoughts?
I know, I know Stan asked us to talk about some things that we really thought were going well, and many of you have mentioned them. I couldn't agree more with Tom, and I'd have talked about this before, but it really goes down to engagement, teacher engagement, administrator engagement. I would really like us to see if there's a way, I know we use it in our business, and we put a high priority on it, and we measure it every year, and that gives feedback to the people that we lead, gives the people that we lead the opportunity to provide that feedback, but I mean, it's very, it's very tangible to be able to determine if you're making progress to the, you know, to the, in the areas that Tom's talking about, you know. I think he said it best when he said you got to have the head and the heart in it, if you want it, and we talk about being the district of choice, the employer of choice, and that's where people are landing, that's what they're looking for. And I couldn't agree more, we've come such a long way in that, but I just think we have to continue to be committed to that and not feel like we've reached a point where we've got that checkmark and we kind of lose track of that. I agree with Craig, Craig's one of the four of us that have kind of lived with this document for a full five years. I do agree that I think we capture things in the five pillars. I almost think, and I know we've talked about this kind of one-off, I almost wonder if student achievement doesn't belong as an umbrella within that strategic plan, because you could look at every one of these things, and if you really kind of go, why do we do that? Why do we want employee excellence? Because ultimately, it's student achievement. You look at our mission, it's producing world-class owners, it is achievement. Every one of these things that we do is related to that. And so I'd like us to see us do that, but also recognize that even within student achievement, you know, that's something we can, again, we've made great progress on, but I think as you point out in some of the strategic initiatives, there's underrepresented groups yet. And while we think the trends are good, I think we, we have to do, you know, even a better job of reaching and understanding what's driving those results, and I think there's a lot of ideas, whether they're magnet schools, whether they're project-based learning, whatever it might be. I just, I just encourage us to be innovative, but innovative in a data-driven way, not following the, you know, kind of the flavor of the day, but making, be innovative, challenging our people as we have to think, you know, how will we do it differently? You know, how do you incorporate some different learning strategies? And creating that flexibility, that'll, I think that'll get us the innovation that we're looking for. And I do think there's deeper relationships with local businesses that can help us in that regard. We haven't even touched the surface of that. We certainly celebrate great relationships, and we should, with NICC and other community partners, but, you know, we haven't even, again, there's such a great opportunity out there, and I believe that there is a business community out there that's ready, willing, and able to embrace playing a role in that, in that education, in that learning model that can, can really help those, can help those kids as they walk across, well be, well before they walk across that stage, know what they, you know, where their passion lies, make sure that they're properly equipped wherever that path is going to lead them. I think those are things that I think we really have great opportunities to do and do within this plan, but it just struck me that maybe that, I'm happy with five, but I almost think that, you know, again, why are we here? Why are the, all these things so important? Ultimately, at the end of the day, that's our litmus test.
It's more than a theme.
Yep.
That's our business.
Yep.
I would mention the book Built to Last, which was the precursor of Good to Great. Built to Last talked about the differences between good and great. Good to Great was how to get there, and they talk about preserve the core and stimulate progress. Looking at those five pillars and maybe tweaking the one, preserving that core but then stimulating progress is definitely the way to get somewhere. One thing I'll throw out, and I don't even know what it means, because it's a weird time for society demographics in general and shifts that are going on. So it's been well documented that women still don't make anywhere near the pay that they should compared to men. I mean, that's a fact, it's been proven a thousand times. It's also a fact that the graduation rate now on college campuses is something like 57% women, 43% men. So it reminds me of that, of the River Museum with the bar, when you drive the barge, and it takes forever to course correct on that barge, and if you over, overcorrect, then what do you do? I don't know, I've brought this up before, and I don't know the answer to any of these questions. We obviously didn't course correct 50 years ago in terms of doling out fair and equitable opportunities in society in a lot of ways. But it seems with a 57-43 graduation rate, that that is, that there's something there worth looking at that says, why aren't our young men inspired for leadership positions like they used to be? And of course, that's very, very not politically correct to talk about that, and I get it. Women have been ripped off for years in terms of their pay, I get that. It's a societal thing that is, that seems to slowly be improving, but not very quickly. So how do you turn around and start saying, well, 47, 57-43 women to men graduating from college? And I think at University of Iowa and Northern Iowa, the enrollment is actually like almost 60-40 now, women to men. Now Iowa State is like, still like 56-44, because I've been watching this with my kid going to school just out of curiosity. I don't know what that all means, I just know that the topic came up tonight of taking a look at equity in the entire district, and I think it's good that we're doing that for a lot of reasons, so. But we do have to keep an eye on that. I don't know what it means, if we're doing anything wrong, I don't know if what we're doing is right, I don't, that's why I defer to the experts in the room. But when you look at minorities, when you look at gay, straight, when you look at boys and girls, when you look at different nationalities, different religions, we really do have to make sure that we're, that we're keeping the playing field fair for everybody, so.
And Mikey mentioned engagement with community and business, and that we've not even scratched the surface. I don't, I'm sure you can't have afford a full-time person to do that, because you have the added challenge then and then tying those things back to our educational requirements. But I think that, as you were suggesting, you can do that. We recently, Stan knows this, we recently had a gentleman approach us about, they will, they will help fund the building of an airplane by students. Well, you think about all of the physics and math and so on and so forth, and then they build a second plane and they sell that the second year, and that funds the next year. I mean, you start looking at things like that and you go, wow, that's where education needs to be, where we're actually providing these light, not only learning the basics of math and physics and, but life lessons and having a product that's a result of student effort, that's the kind of stuff we need to be doing. I would encourage us to be, I mean, we can receive those offers, but I think we have to pursue them. And I don't know how you do that from a staff perspective, but I think that's going out in the community and not just talking to the John Deere's, but talking to the Home Builders Association and saying, how do we, how do we craft something that will actually be a great learning experience and provide you a ready, trained workforce when they leave? So to me, those are the things I'd really like to see.
Like the house built, the house project.
And I don't think we've done it last few years for funding purposes.
Well, a lot of issues there. It's the funding, it's the, it's back to the whole certification.
Certification issue.
Instructors, you'll see a lot of those take place, and David, correct me if I'm wrong, under the concurrent enrollment umbrella, because the licensure requirements of the community college is different than the state requires of a state, of a high school teacher. And so there's a little bit of flexibility there, that's why you'll see some of those programs existing not in.
Everyone would like to see us push the envelope.
I'm sorry?
Our students are getting college credit for those experiences today, where when we offered it in our high schools, they weren't getting college credit. So they're getting a bonus in addition to the training and the skills.
Yeah.
I'd like to see us push the envelope, really push the envelope. I mean, I don't mind getting a front-page story, you know, saying, district, you know, in trouble or something, because we tried something that, you know, we weren't maybe enabled to do, but everyone knows is the best thing to do.
Yeah, best thing for the kids.
Well, if you tap into a student where maybe the traditional classroom isn't right, we know that, you tap into their interests and you get them, their eyes open and their attention, sky's the limit with those kids. So, now's the time when they're in high school especially.
And that's any kid.
Yeah, any kid, yeah, it doesn't have to be a lower achiever, high achiever, you tap into what, and help them decide, because so many kids graduate, well, what are you going to do? Are you going to go into college? Are you going to go to tech school? Are you going to get a job? They don't know. And so if we can help them, junior and senior year, identify what path they want to take.
And NCC will tell you that their, their classes are full of people with four-year degrees who are back at school a year or two later saying, eh, that wasn't the right thing.
Right, and all the money they spent, yeah.
So, it's right for some, not for all, we just have to find that mix and provide experiences for our students to help them make those decisions, and give them enough flexibility and those skills to make changes and adjustments along the way.
Yeah.
So they can change their mind when they're 30, or when they're 40, or when they're 50, to say, I'm going to do something different.
Okay, according to Forbes, 44% public universities, 43.6% male, this is from 2016, 43.6% male, 56.4% female. At all private schools, 40, 40.7% male, 59.3% female. Overwhelming difference in college enrollments right now.
But the women's goals and likes have changed.
Oh, yeah.
Most of us, our parents, mom stayed home.
But still.
Things have changed, yes.
That's a huge. That's a huge discrepancy in size, in percentage.
But I don't think, I don't look at it as a negative for the men, I just think it is an overwhelming positive for the women.
I think men need to step up. Seriously. That isn't a joke. I'm serious about that. As a society, we have a serious.
Well, it maybe was that way because women weren't stepping up. Now they are, so it's more equal.
I've read some things where psychologists think the role models for males are the problem.
Okay. Are there, before we get too far off. Are there any, is there any other, any other feedback or commentary?
I have this report from psychology today.
Okay. Colby, shut down the wifi. Whatever you can do really fast.
Well, you know, let's not lose the fact that something like 400 of the Fortune 500 companies 25 years ago are no longer in existence. And, you know, the models of business are changing, and if we're not adapting to what the workforce needs are going to be, I don't know, we can't, we can't even predict.
Yeah, go Google Kodak.
Exactly. It's a challenge.
If you have something to say.
Well, I was going to say, is this, you know, we had talked about different start times of schools, you know, is that falling to the?
So I think that's more the strategy level. Sorry, I lost my voice out. Everybody's relieved of that. But the, when we get the big picture, then sort of the purple is where we'll spend some time, some strategies, and we'll come back to the board in another work session with a draft, and we'll go back and forth.
Okay.
I think that's where we start to identify.
Because there's a lot of other things.
Some more specific things that we want, that are going to get us to more flexibility, to more real-world experiences, to more, more college-level experiences for our students for, you know, really what I've heard the board say is that, you know, when we sit at graduation here in a few weeks, you want to know that every student who walks across that stage and receives a diploma has been experienced, has been offered an opportunity to not only get the basics, but to explore those things that they have a passion about or motivate them. And then they've been given those opportunities in an equitable manner, that all students have the opportunity to participate fully in, in those experiences as it moves them forward to what's next, whether they be male or female or from, however they would identify themselves as a student, good student, bad student, economic advantage, economic disadvantage, racial differences, all those things aside, everybody who walks across was exposed to an opportunity to really set the stage for themselves about where they go next.
I think with the student achievement and the student development, that we, everything is kind of always on graduating, and we have to make sure that we're implementing programs at the elementary and middle school level as well, that's going to keep these kids started there. You know, the equity thing, cultural thing, all of that stuff, you know, introducing that at the elementary level does a lot more than just waiting. And I know we're doing a lot of things like that, but that's my thing, you know, start, you know, the kids at the elementary level and give them experiences that they probably wouldn't have in other districts. You know, I think what you said, the, looking at the different start times and, you know, looking at extended calendars, you know, keep looking at the data to see if, you know, what's best for our kids. And I don't, the, I've seen Iowa City switching the start times from the elementary to, and I just don't want the excuse to be that the reason we don't do it is because activities, you know, is primary. Like, I mean, Iowa City, you know, their kids get out, their high school kids get out at four o'clock, and they've made it work. So I just, my thing is, is like when we're looking at that and seeing if it would work better for our, our kids, is that, you know, activities are very important, but the primary reason they're in the school is to be learned, so.
Student achievement.
Student achievement, yeah.
So, so those types of things, I think, are that next level. The magnet school, the calendar, all those things are strategies towards the, towards the goal, and that we'll look at and bring forward, and again, in several meetings with the board, obviously as a draft, and then you tweak and push and pull out and add to and that sort of thing, as we head down this path to a new strategic plan in November, December of next year.
I have a, something I want to bring up, and it's under, maybe under resource management, but looking down the road at, let's say, the changing demographics of our school district, where would, is that, would that be this broad area as well? For example, the south, the south side, southwest arterial and all that, looking at new elementary schools? These are some things that may, within the next five years.
Sure, yeah. What are the changes to the community going to be? And certainly, we would anticipate a southwest arterial, which I understand will be driving on in the next year or so, could very well change where people live in the same way that the northwest arterial did. So we'll want to position ourselves well for, you know, how we serve those students.
So we want to be ahead of the curve, so to speak, ahead of the game a little bit?
Absolutely.
Yeah, you need to be, otherwise it gets real expensive.
It gets real expensive.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely. And even if you look at around Table Mount right now, there's a significant growth that's going to take place there in the next two or three years.
Anything else to add? Obviously, this is the first step in a lot of steps, but again, just trying to give the administration a sense of where we, where we see things going, and I think Tom said it well, you know, we keep the core. Sounds like there's a lot of consensus around. We've got the core areas identified, and each of you have expressed some ideas, but obviously there's a lot to be done in that area. We'll continue to flush those out and get down in the weeds at some point, but I think this is a great first step.
Absolutely. And I appreciate you willing to do that in May, because the staff really needs something to work on this summer.
Yeah.
So there we have it. I see you shaking, Colby, it's no other. I'm not sure you got consensus there, but, all right. Well, with that.